All right. Thank you all for joining as usual. Our first order of business and routine business here is just to approve the agenda for the meeting. Does anybody have anything to add to the agenda that was sent out or any other edits to make? No, we're good. Okay, then I move to approve tonight's meeting agenda. Can I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Thank you. All right, second order of business is to approve the August meeting minutes. Charles, thank you again for taking all of this over. Appreciate the attention to detail on those.
Michael did this one.
Michael did those? Were you not here? Were you not at the meeting this?
Anyway.
Our auditors needed them a little early and we wanted to be responsive, but Charles has blessed them.
Well, they're beautiful. I don't have any edits. Does anybody else have any suggested edits to the last meeting minutes? Okay, then I will go ahead and move to approve the September meeting minutes.
Second.
Second, okay. All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
All right, great. Okay, then I will hand it over to the leadership team for their updates.
Thank you, Gabrielle, and thank you all for making the time for our regular monthly meeting. We welcome our Dean of Instruction, Dorsey Fahami, and Maida Torres, who is our Director of Operations, and of course, of course, my co-founder and colleague, Michael Regnier, as part of our staff. We, as Michael mentioned before, our principal is on much-needed vacation, and she sends her regards as well. My report is fairly straightforward. We have closure updates. Most of the bullets were written in advance. I'll have to say that Gabrielle and I are working on a future bullet report that is less bullets-driven or updates-driven. While there still is much of a need for updates and bullets, I will be reformatting most of the report into the performance framework benchmarks that the board and Gabrielle and all of you have asked us to do. So that's coming, and Gabrielle and I have started that work. For this agenda tonight, I'll ask Michael to do the closure updates as he's been running herd on all of our safety protocols for the building, and Dorsa will do the academic report. And I know that Michael and Maida will be doing enrollment and operations, and I'll chime in at the end just on some construction updates. Michael?
Sure, thank you. I thought I would call back to a slide we talked about a month ago, which in some ways seems like years ago, when we said we knew that this school year was going to require us to keep balancing and rebalancing always around our mission. As you know, we were unfortunately deemed to be in what the governor calls the orange zone, and we are finishing up our second week of all remote learning as a result of that. I'd like to commend our team for acting quickly to get technology ready and in Chromebooks and backpacks, homework packets, and other immediate assignments out for the first week of that closure period, which was last week, and then our instructional team for getting our teachers ready to shift the way that they were working. The way we talk about it, you know, we Leap Academy have done this before, but of course, not every teacher has done this before with us. And so it was a week of recalibrating and planning and preparing. And then this week, synchronous instruction has really resumed in earnest with a new schedule, using the different tools, many of which we know as an organization from last year. We, at this point, are anticipating an announcement any day now. The rumor was probably today or tomorrow, and now it sounds like more likely tomorrow. And we hope that the announcement will be sort of once and definitive and coordinated between the city and the state levels. And we will then be able to communicate with our families and our staff about by when we might be able to reopen the building. The new rules that would apply to us if we were deemed to be in a yellow zone, which I think is the likely way that we could reopen, would require some additional regulatory compliance on our end. Most notably, there is some kind of expectation about COVID testing of a certain percentage of our population, which was not previously required. So our team joined an informational call just this afternoon to try to understand more about how that would work. But it continues to be a day-to-day process of trying to find the latest information, trying to convey that to our stakeholders. And at this point, it sounds like likely tomorrow we'll have some direction from the state, whether that's that we're able to reopen or whether there's going to be a continued period of closure. They'll likely be redrawing the map. So the first thing we'll be looking at is where's Leap Academy on the new map. Let me pause there in case there are any questions or discussion about this two-week shift to all remote instruction.
One quick question. I know that in our last meeting, we were talking about sort of rethinking how we measure attendance in a remote scenario, and you know, it was kind of a, we're sort of operating under the idea that we would have months to figure that out, and that hasn't unfortunately been our circumstance. Has there been any sort of further?
I think we're in agreement that some kind of easing needs to happen. The attendance itself has been trending in a pretty good direction, but once Delly Ness returns, we'll likely be rolling out an adjustment to that policy. For those of you who may not recall, the issue there was how to balance between encouraging full attendance online, but also making sure that we're accurately representing when our kids really are in school and not being too draconian there in the way that we reported. All right. So the next topic, we wanted to share some updates about what was academics. And I will give a bit of an overview, and Ms. Fahami can maybe fill in some of the blanks. It's been an extraordinary period for us, obviously, but we haven't let that stop us from collecting the data that we need in order to know where our students are, especially coming off of last year's interruptions. So our students have largely completed their formative assessments in English reading and in math. And that also includes a use of a new kind of very granular assessment in reading using a tool called STEP. And so that has been going well. And I know the team is now trying to figure out if we have to stay remote, how do we continue to do that? We also were invited to be a part of a pilot project for a tool that's been in development for a number of years now, which is the STEP assessment in Spanish. And so that's a partnership with the folks who make STEP out of the University of Chicago. And so we made the decision, since the English step had gone so well, that we'll do it in both languages, and that will give our teachers an ease with the format and will give us data that can be compared across languages. And we really felt good about that emerging partnership, including members of their team who have dual-language expertise. The other thing is that we've been invited by our partners at the New School Venture Fund to participate in a improvement science, continuous improvement sort of project. And some members of the instructional leadership team, Dorsa, Christina Gutierrez, and Delly Ness will be getting some guidance there, and I think that their plan is to focus on how we can keep improving what we are doing remotely. Of course, even before we had to shift to all remote instruction, we've had and do have cohorts of remote learners in each grade level, and we want to keep getting better at that. So those are a few highlights, but I'm I'm sure, Dorsa, you may want to add a couple of things.
Yes, I think part of the STEP assessment, we have, but we have with our partners at STEP have been able to get into some deep data diving around where our school is on the English. So we're excited to, I think, be able to get that deep with Spanish as well, really feeling like it wasn't really comparative two different assessments across two different languages. So excited there. And then just part of those changes that we made to the remote schedule have been something that we've been thinking about even with those three remote classes. And so part of that is a change that will continue to work and continue to be what our remote classes schedule is, even if we do transition back in person. And then, in general, across academics, something that we've decided is across all, you know, throughout the day, in order to make transitions more seamless, in case they do happen, to really have Chromebooks be more part of everyday instruction. So having seesaw, having homework through these applications, so that teachers are able to support just in case we do have to make a seamless switch back, having those tools be a part of everyday instruction.
Right. So again, anticipating that we may be allowed to come back into the building. We're not going to let everyone forget all about that, but rather support students in building the habits that they'll need if they then return back home. Great, thank you. I'm going to keep going, but please chime in if you have a question. Enrollment and operations, so we've we've been busy, and I think the uncertainty of what's going on has put a bit of a damper on new families enrolling. We've got handful of families that have applied and are interested in a seat, but are sort of in wait-and-see period. But today, we saw some applications continue to come back in. For the month, as you saw in the bullets, we've stayed pretty even, where we were hoping to gain ground on enrollments. So if we add these next few families, we will end up in the neighborhood of about 240, where we'd hope to be more like 245. But it's still pretty unpredictable, you know, as depending on what our family's other choices look like. For example, if it looks like everyone is going to be remote, we may find that some of our families who apply because they wanted the Spanish immersion but weren't interested in an open remote seat in kindergarten or second grade, where we have pretty long wait lists, may start to say, you know what, if I'm going to be remote anyway, I might as well have remote Spanish immersion. So that continues to be something we're keeping a close eye on. Operationally, we have a building that's been largely empty for the last couple of weeks. We haven't tried to capture a great deal of cost savings from that because we anticipated this being pretty temporary. But we put our staff to good use, cataloging books, doing deep cleans, preparing take-home packets for kids in anticipation in case they need to be out longer. We've also had a lot of help from our new partners at the company EdOps. You may recall, we approved that contract recently. So they've helped with the rostering for all these assessments that we've done, state data reporting, and are helping kind of make sure that all of our systems are talking to each other. So they've been a great help so far. We also had some construction updates. Roberto, would you like to talk about those?
Thankfully, after 60 days or 90 days or whatever it has been to finish out this project, true to their word, the condenser units were shipped out of Texas, and they arrived at our school yesterday. And it was an amazing feat to see tons of equipment being lifted 70 feet into the air and being swung over the top of the roof, and they will be installed Thursday. An additional unit is coming Thursday with a much bigger crane, and that too will be lifted onto the roof. And as we had projected, the fourth floor will have heating just in time for cold weather days. So we're very happy about that. Installation should be complete within the next week. The upshot to our construction is that we're 99.9 finished. Once the HVAC is fully installed, these days that there have been no children in the school, we have been very careful to allow a lot of the punch list work that needed to be completed to be done. And we have found that the high quality of installation really minimized the amount of punch list items that were in the building. Still, it's being completed with no children there, and that makes it really, really easy. On the other side of the work, I met this last week with our partners at Raza Development Fund and the team, and we discussed it's more of a financial issue that's related to the construction as per the loan and construction overages. And I'm happy to talk about those when we get into the financial reports. But suffice to say that we have a very good partner in Raza Development, and they have basically let us know that any potential overages, should there be some, and we are projecting some, will be handled well by our in part with Raza Development and partly with us as well. I reported this good news to David, and I'm sure that we will be giving you more details in the very, very near future. November 1st, we will have a report on all the potential overages that can be had. And that's forthcoming, and we feel very good about that outcome. In the last couple of weeks, we've had some significant meetings with philanthropy. Our good friends at the Calder Foundation have included us in their next round, and we've talked to them about specific requests. We're submitting our proposal. I think that there's a projection in our budget for that amount of money, but we're going to hope for the best and hope to not only meet that projection, but also exceed it. We also, as Michael mentioned, we were selected actually by New School Venture Fund as a as a school to partner with Bellwether. You remember that Bellwether in Education Partners was the organization that I had contracted with to do the original LEAP plan back in 2015? And they certainly recognized LEAP and LEAP's contribution to the field. And we're very proud to be selected by New School Venture Fund and Bellwether. We also met with the Tards School Growth Fund recently, Kathy Hamel there, and we're, again, these are all potential funders and possible partnership supports. I know Michael also had a meeting with a funder that he has talked to. So we're moving in that direction with all due energy. That's all I have for now.
Okay, are these the end of the overall report out from the?
I believe so, unless there are questions.
Any questions from the group?
We really hope to be back in the building, teaching kids in person. So please cross your fingers and watch the news.
We will definitely cross our fingers. We'll cross all of our fingers and toes. As Roberto mentioned earlier.
I would like to say, Gabrielle, that when we did close, all of us were in the street, meeting with parents, and every parent to a person said to us and said to me, Roberto, what can we do to keep our school open? What can we do to organize? I know that even our board member, Maho McOrkendale, and others said, we so need the school, and we so want to be back in school. So it's weighing very heavily on us, the role that we play in the community. And we know that we're committed to doing all that we can under the governor and the health guidelines, but certainly crossing all fingers to see if we can be back in school as soon as we possibly can. Communications have gone out to our parents in different formats. We did a closing video the day of the close. And when we do get the update from the governor's office, we will do another high-level communication to all parents, many different forms, so that they can ensure that there's no confusion. And that's really what we're facing. Between the mayor and between the governor, parents are really caught in between. And so we know who our authorizer is, and those are the orders that we take. Michael met with the team today and just kind of laid out a timeline for what that means to the staff and their planning. And so we're very comfortable in terms of our ability to ramp up. And before Delly Ness left, she said, you know, if we get the word on Friday, I know that our teachers will be ready to go on Monday. So that's very heartwarming, and it's a strong show of confidence in our team that they're doing everything to be ready for in-school instruction again.
Thank you, Roberto. I know this was not an easy or welcome decision to have to make, and in some ways wasn't even a decision we of our own volition. We appreciate the care that went into communicating with all our families. Thank you to everyone as well. From the school team, Maida, I'm sure that a lot of things fell to you to handle during that time, and it was once again a really crazy and sudden move. Maho, thank you for your input from the parent perspective. I'm sure it was difficult to wear the hat of a parent and a board member at the same time with respect to the communication and just kind of living this as you're trying to advise on it. So thank you all, and we really do hope that we're able to get back into the schools as soon as it's, you know, fully safe for everyone to do so, and just focus on the work that we, that you are all here to do. Really. Thanks again.
Thank you.
Okay. Absolutely. Okay, so from here, I think we can go into committee reports, beginning with finance. Emily, hi, my Valena. I don't think you were here. David will not be able to join us tonight. He has a feminatal emergency he has to attend to. He called me very apologetically to let me know about it, but we have Bob Keough here, as well as Jimmy. Let me make sure I've got your, Jimmy Vora, thank you, from our auditor, to take us through both the audited finance report, our first audit, in addition to the monthly financials. And I think that the order we decided was for the audit to go first, to give Jimmy the first crack at things and enable him to give him his time back. I will hand it over to you, Jimmy.
Thank you. Hi, everyone. Thank you for the introduction. I am the Audit Director from NBAF. Thank you, everyone, for attending the call. Can everyone hear me?
Yes, we can.
Yes.
Okay, great. So I'm sure you guys have a busy agenda. I will try to go over these documents at a high level, but please stop me if you have any questions. So I would like to go over three documents this evening. The presentation should take about 10 to 12 minutes. The three documents that we will be going over is the draft of the financial statements, the required communication document, and the CSPAUP report. Do you all have those three documents?
Yes, I sent everything out, Jimmy bundled into one PDF, just to make it a little easier for everybody.
Great, great. So the first document that we will go over is the financial statements. The I have the financial statements open, so the third page, page three of the PDF, is the Independent Auditor's Report. That is a clean report. We call it the unmodified opinion. We had no findings for this year's audit. That's a good thing. Page five is the balance sheet. That gives you the financial position of the school as of June 30 of 2020. Page six is the PNL, the net income of this year. It was actually a net loss of 144,000. And Jimmy, I think you mean a net gain. 140, right, 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 sorry. And the most important statement in this document is page seven, the Statement of Functional Expenses. The reason I think this is the most important is that this measures how well you utilize your funds from program services to management in general. And startup schools, I would say, they're in a range of low 70% to 75%, and you guys are at 72%, which is in line with other startup schools. And the way that we calculate the 72% is the 3,37,000 divided by the 4.2 million of total expenses. Okay, so that's, and we see with most of our schools that this number should be increasing as the school grows. We would like to see this number around 80 to 85 range. That's, and we have some schools that are around 90%. So, but you guys are in line. That's a good thing, but you should see this number growing. Page eight is the cash flows. This is, this is, explains you how the cash operated in and out during the year. Page nine of the PDF, that's where the notes of the financial statements start, and from page nine, 10, 11, 12, they explain how do you account for your assets, liabilities, net assets, and PNL accounts. Page 13 is your liquidity footnote, how liquid is the school? Page footnote four, details on your property and equipment. Those are the furniture and fixtures and computers, everything that you bought, the leasehold improvements that you guys did starting up to school, and you're depreciating that over three years, seven years, and the life of the lease for the leasehold improvements. Five is your PPP loan, which hopefully should be, I was talking about today, hopefully that should be fully forgiven. Page footnote number six on page 14 is your line of credit. And seven is your net assets with donor restrictions. Footnote number eight is risk management. That's it. The big item on that is that we're putting on all of our charter schools and all of our not-for-profits is the COVID-19 footnote. It's a risk footnote that we're adding to all of our financials. And page 15, you have your commitments, your rent commitments. You have a big lease. And and then page 16 and 17 is the compliance report. Again, that compliance report is clean. It's an unmodified opinion. You had no findings. And the reason I keep saying that you have no findings is because we have some schools that have findings. And and I would, I will tell you that a lot of the schools that have findings are in the teacher certification. They have teacher certification issues. There's a lot of New York City schools that they have teachers coming from out of state, or they're hiring good teachers, and they don't, they're not certified. The process is very, it's been very tough. There's, has been no consequences. We have seen schools that have uncertified teachers and have a finding on their financial statements, but they get renewals on their charters. So we have never seen any issues, but you will, the problem is that the law says that if you have more than 15 uncertified teachers, we would have to give you a finding. And so hopefully, they change the law, or they get a little lenient with the certifications. So.
Jimmy, just to be clear, we do not have such a finding.
Yes, you don't have a finding. This is just a way to just communicate what's happening with other schools, you know, so.
Appreciate it.
Yeah, yeah. And I have, we have about 25 charter schools, and you can, I would say, a good handful have those findings, but there's no consequences again for it. Okay, so that was the draft of the financial statements. Any questions on the financials? Okay. The next document that I would like to go over is the communication document. That's a required communication, the governance. It's required communication under US auditing standards. It page two basically tells us that we're required to communicate to you guys about planning and how we're planning this. We had a number of calls with Bob and Roberto. Page three, most important. Page three, most important note here is number E where we're mentioning the accounting estimates that were used for the functionals, which are in line with other not-for-profits and schools. It's the allowance for doubtful accounts, statement of functional expenses and appreciation. And page four is the most important item here is proposed and corrected adjustments. We had about two audit adjustments and three reclassifying entries. And there were no proposed and uncorrected, which is a good thing. So we corrected everything. And the last page of this document, it's opportunities to strengthen the internal controls. One item that we saw that you're a not-for-profit, you shouldn't be paying income tax or sales tax. So we saw at one expense, for one expense transaction, there was some sales tax paid. We see that with a lot of schools. We, so we just want to point that out. Another opportunity, I would say to, you know, I, to strengthen the controls and segregation of duties. I know you, there is a friends of organization, we have, we have many friends of organization audits that we do. And we find that, you know, you're a startup school, you want to keep your, you want to have segregation of duties. You, you want to have, you want to keep separate schedules, separate intercompany schedules. It would go, it would, it would be good for the long run. So you want to start that now. And I was communicating that to Bob today, so.
And just to remind the board that we have done that and Bob is shepherding that process as well. But we are keeping separate records for friends of, to maintain that segregation.
Great, great. And the last document here is the AUP report. So that is a required AUP audit. It's a very small audit. It's a procedural audit. They, the, the New York SED requires you to have a separate, small, or I like to say, small audits. They, they want us to do four procedures on your CSP grant. Usually that's the first year or two of the, of the startup schools. And it, it's every school that has $50,000 or more that they spend for CSP grants, you are required to have an audit for that. And that's the third document and that is a clean, we, clean opinion and there's no findings for that. I think that was my presentation. Any, any questions?
No questions.
Gabrielle, I just wanted to remind the board, and I know that you were there as well. David has in fact gone through this with Gabrielle as part of the financial committee's oversight and review. There were two or three bullets that were slightly amended, but mainly language that position, that particular point a little bit better. But nothing that was materially changing any of the, of the data. I will say that as executive director, when you can put together in your first year, a clean audit, it's a, it's a milestone for the organization. And, and one that, given that we had so many obstacles to overcome, including no monies for the CSP from the first year. And we were able to negotiate a loan to be able to cover that bridge loan. And we were able to not only that, but pay it off as well. That we were able to raise the philanthropy necessary to really give us the cushion that has made this surplus possible in this first year. So I'm very proud of the work that we all have done to accomplish that. And thank you, Bob, and your team for, for keeping us, keeping it real for us and making sure that we're following the protocols necessary. And Jimmy, to your team for documenting it and for letting, letting our board know that, you know, we're, we're in the good place.
Thank you, thank you. And I just want to mention to go final, we would need two representation letters. I will send that over to Bob. And once we get those signed, we can issue the, and get this all issued hopefully this week or early next week. We still have a good 10, 10, 11 days.
Next week would be fine, Jimmy. I know David needs to sign the representation letter and with him dealing with a family emergency, he may be out of pocket for a day or so. So we will take the necessary steps to make sure we get board approval on the draft audit tonight. And then we'll be ready to sign and get those over to you.
Great, great. Thank you.
Thank you. Again, Jimmy, thank you so much for your time. We appreciate it. We know you're busy. So just thank you again, and we appreciate your partnership.
Thank you. Thank you, everyone.
For your time tonight and for your time last night during our committee meeting. We really appreciate how thorough everything was and.
You're welcome. You're very welcome. And if you guys have any questions, Bob, Bob and Roberto have my email address, please. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Jimmy. Have a good evening.
Bye bye. Bye bye.
I guess in David's stead, I will just, I, I know a lot of you don't have a job where you need to look at audited financial statements. So just to contextualize, I think what Jimmy just flew through over the last 10 minutes. Key takeaways for you as a board, I think. The one financial figure that you care about is the $144,000 change in net assets. At the end of the day, what that means is over since inception, we have a positive net income to the tune of $144,000. So to Roberto's point, given the uphill battle that we had, lack of a cash flow, having to take out a note on not hitting our first year enrollment target, to still be able to generate a six-figure surplus shows, I think, a lot of fiduciary strength and responsibility at the school level. Number two, this isn't just a financial audit. He did talk about like a lack of findings specifically related to like something like teacher certification. So the auditors don't just test what we give them as far as financials. They look at the school's hiring practices. So they requested, requested offer letters for everyone that came through the door this year. They test teacher certification, enrollment of students and how student data is captured. And they look at what the information we have in our student information system to make sure it aligns to what we're reporting to the city and the state. So it's kind of wraparound testing, internal controls, fraud prevention, things like that. So when he comes back and says that there's no findings and the, and the only thing that they really mentioned in anything was that one, in one instance of their testing, they found a situation where we paid like $40 in sales tax. I think that's a testament to the internal controls and structures that Myra, Roberto and Michael have, you know, kind of put in at the school. And it's a testament to kind of like organizational like strength on a holistic level. So I think that's a testament to them. So I, I, what, and again, to the, to the board chair, I think the action that we need from this board is to kind of accept these draft audit financials for approval from the full board. So we can get the management letter signed that Jimmy mentioned. And then we'll have David sign whenever he's available. And the due date on those back to the state education department is November 4th.
Thanks very much, Bob. I wanted to again echo everything that both Bob and Roberto have mentioned. It has really been, and Emily in the chat, it is really a huge accomplishment for first year school, especially one that faced the extreme number of startup challenges that we did to be able to not just have a clean audit, but also have a reserve in place after year one. It speaks to an incredible and strong oversight structure at the school. And so we're really very proud and happy. David said to pass on the sentiment that he, the financials were exactly what we expected. He's really, really pleased. And it's, you know, a big exhale, I think, from a board perspective, that everything is as clean as it is. And again, that, I know that a lot of that has to do with the leadership team, as well as previous leadership from both David and Joaquin, our prior treasurer, to ensure that all of those Ts were crossed and Is were dotted. So I think unless anybody has any other questions or comments, I will go ahead and move to approve the draft audited financials. Have a second?
A second.
Okay, all in favor?
Hi.
Hi. Great. Bob, do you want to take us through the, the monthlies?
Sure. I, I know Gabrielle also circulated the monthly financials to you. So I will move through these quickly just because educational finance is boring and you've got a lot on your plate tonight. The dashboard on page one, I think we, if you're just looking at the four graphs that are there in green and blue, you'll see that right now for this fiscal year, we meet all of the state education department's financial metrics, which is good and a move in the right direction. You can, now that we're kind of entering our third year, we have a three-year data set. So you can see the movement along those and we are trending in the right direction for each of them. Scrolling down to the enrollment portion, again, enrollment's tough this year just because of all the moving pieces related to the pandemic. So as far as kind of drawing a line in the sand right now, as far as projections go, we had a budgeted enrollment of 244 students. The financials that you are looking at assume a, an enrollment of 240 students. So that's a, a, a four-student variance there. But the offset for that in the right direction is if you are looking at our special education enrollment count, we had a budgeted total of there of about 26 students. And right now, as of our last per pupil submission to the department, we have a total of 35. So our paid student enrollment, those students that get enough service minutes where we actually get extra funding, has increased over the course of the year. So we do have a special education offset to kind of, to counteract any per pupil changes that we are expecting. Moving on to the profit and loss statement on the second page, based off of our enrollment changes, unbudgeted monies that we had kind of on the federal side. We are projecting about $5.95 million in total revenue at the school this year, which is pretty much in line with what we had budgeted. And then we've realized about $1.5 million of that. Just as a caveat, on the revenue side, we have had our preliminary phone discussions with the state health department and their counterparts at FEMA to offset any PPE costs that the school has had over the last nine months. So we do expect to be able to recover some revenue there. And this also does not include the PP, the PPP money that we received as far as the payroll protection program. Chase is slowly opening up forgiveness applications and we know we have the offsetting expenses. So we are cautiously optimistic that we will be able to recognize about $500,000 in additional revenue over the course of the year. On the staffing side, we are running a little bit high on salaries and benefits. This is chalked up to a handful of things, just hiring for some unbudgeted part-time positions and also the inclusion of some leadership stipends that we are giving to instructional staff. And then also just on the benefit side, it's, your staff's open enrollment actually ended at the end of September. So new health elections will be taking place over the month of October at the new premium rates. So we'll be able to right-size those estimates on the cost of employer benefits as we move through the year. On the other than personnel side, we've identified about $58,000 in cost savings that we will have. Just kind of tightening up assumptions and taking a good look at how we were running over the course of the year. And then I would also like to point out that on the contingency line down near the bottom, we still have $394,000 in untouched contingency funds. The big question mark as we kind of are looking forward to the second half of the year is Cuomo's obvious threat to cut state aid funding across the board 20%. You know, traditional school districts are certainly going to feel this hurt. And the charter space, while it feels like it's protected by some state statutes and less specific language that's in the law, that they are immune from a charter cuts. I think there's some different feelings at the Board of Regents right now. If charter schools, state aid funding stays intact 100% while a district doesn't, is not, is obviously feeling that cut. So the contingency that we do have budgeted there is specifically set to offset, is there to offset any potential state aid cuts. So we don't feel kind of the super big hit on the bottom line. So with all that being said, bottom left number is $412,000. That's our surplus year-to-date. We are running great. And then the $130,000 is where we are projecting kind of softly landing for this year. And that assumes a cut to per pupil funding and kind of enrollment holding study. That being said, I mean, we budgeted a $21,000 surplus. So we are more than six figures to the good there through kind of some fiscal management and decisions that Roberto and Michael have made. The cash, the cash flow statement is the third attachment. You know, I, I, we're much, we're in a much better position than we were last year. I think over the next, up through March, we are, you know, confident that we'll be able to have six figures in cash and not really be feeling any kind of pinch. And we have built in, you know, that cushion just as far as the contingency goes. So I think we are in a good spot on the cash flow. And then just some high-level numbers on the final page, which is the balance sheet. Top right number, which I'm sure a lot of you can relate to is our cash on hand. We're carrying 600, we carried $626,000 at the end of September, which is great. And we've seen a decrease in our accounts receivable as well. Obviously, we want to keep that number as low as we can. That means we are collecting on all of our bills to the city, to the states, to the federal government. So we've seen about a $90,000 decrease there, which means money's coming in the door and all of our bills are being paid on time, which is good. And then on the liability side, an accounts payable decrease from year end. And we are holding again, those liabilities for the PPP funds on our balance sheets. So hopefully between the $90,000 that you're seeing on the short-term line and the $330,000 on the long-term line. In a perfect world, those go away after our PPP loan is forgiven. Best case at this point, we would expect a decision by our lending institution, Chase and the Small Business Administration, probably sometime after the new year.
I want to just insert a caveat here. And, and all of us are aware, when we approved the budget for the current year, that we were planning for a possible reduction from the state. And that still holds true. We don't know what's going to happen. We don't know if it's going to happen, but we're ready that in the event that it does happen. The second thing that we don't know is how to now go into a second school year in the midst of a pandemic and what impact that will have on enrollment. And so we're all hopeful and we know that our parents want to be back in school. There's a slight mathematical problem with trying to get to that 249 number simply because of the space issues that we have in our building. But in the next week or so, Michael and Delina's and I will look at the remote numbers and to see if there's any possibility of increasing our students on the remote side just to be aware that in the event that we do lose some students because of the pandemic. We're very cautious and I mentioned earlier in the meeting. The last point that the school is still liable for are any potential overages in the, on the construction side. We've done a really good job there with our DBI partners to track all the expenses. And we know exactly where the monies have gone and where they were spent. I think on the low end of any overages would be $70,000 up to the high end of $300,000. And that's due to the potential of the DOB, the Department of Buildings, forcing us to put in what's called a stamp pipe in the building. And we're prepared for that. So that preparation came out of a conversation with our, our funding partners, our loan partners at Rosetta Development Fund. And, and we're very happy that they have said that they would share in that as well. So we've done everything possible to mitigate and to provide us the kind of insurance policies that the organization needs to have as we go forward in this very difficult year of incertidumb, uncertainty. And so we're, we're, we're just wanted to give you those points as well.
Thank you, Roberto. Thank you, Bob. Appreciate that. I know that you run through these as quickly as you can, but it's, it's really, you'd always give us a really good overview of all of the important info. And thank you, even on the second hearing of it after the finance committee meeting, I still appreciate getting. I still, I still appreciate getting all the information.
Thank you.
Okay. So no votes, uh, needed for this portion. Bob, do you have to go? I, I know that you mentioned you might have. You're okay?
No, I'm, uh, I have my, my, I am all set with my other obligations. So I'd love to sit.
That's right. Okay. All right. Great. Well, we should, uh, I don't think we have too much longer to go. All right. Thank you so much. I think that's it for the finance committee. Next committee would be, uh, executive. I don't think we have anything to review here specifically. Uh, Roberto alluded earlier to, uh, hopefully updating our format for the report out soon. Uh, I think that, uh, we essentially want to get to a point where we are, um, taking our charter targets, our charter goals, what we're going to be held accountable for at renewal time, which I think is something that we have to be thinking about all the time. Now that we're in the second year, we've got startup, uh, under our belts, an incredibly hard startup year. Um, we have to kind of look forward toward what we're responsible for during the renewal process and then, uh, start setting some interim goals, you know, hopefully on a year-over-year basis and be reporting out on a month-to-month basis on how, you know, what we're doing to get to those goals, how we're measuring, whether or not we're getting there, et cetera. And it hopefully will, um, not only sort of keep us all focused on, uh, that sort of framing as we think about school progress, but also, uh, hopefully serve a couple dual purposes that the, uh, school leadership team can use their report outs, uh, for the board meetings to inform things like their annual report and different, uh, SED reports that they need to do over the course of the year. Um, but that is not happening at this meeting. Hopefully next meeting or, um, the latest, the, in two meetings from now. So I'm gonna work with Roberto on that, for me for that, and possibly reach out to some of you for, uh, some help as well. Okay. The, uh, education accountability, uh, academics and accountability committee met, I believe, I'm going to get the date wrong on this, last Wednesday. Um, the focus of that meeting was, well, do you, is there anything? First, I was going to talk about the SLA, uh, focus of that meeting, but is there anything else that we need to talk about before I summarize that? No? Okay. Melissa, Michael, Dorsa, feel free to supply anything that I may mischaracterize or, um, forget or, uh, for any other reason. If you feel like you need to add, just let me know. Oh, go ahead.
I said, we'll do.
Okay. Uh, last Wednesday, the focus of the meeting was largely to talk about the school's, uh, Spanish Language Arts SLA curriculum and, uh, some challenges that have come up there. I think as, uh, you all know, part of the intention of the curriculum that we had for LEAP, uh, starting out, was to be able to create our own, uh, Spanish Language Arts curriculum from scratch, and have that done during, doing, during this charter term. And, uh, it's a pretty large and ambitious goal to have for, uh, I think of, for a first-term school and especially given the circumstances that we've been operating in. Um, just to summarize the, what we talked about at a very high level, uh, the leadership team reported some challenges with, uh, the usage of the curriculum and the content of the curriculum, uh, mainly the timing of its delivery, um, kind of being a little too close to when it was going to be used for proper, uh, review and adaptation. Uh, there were some questions about the scaffolding and the rigor that was provided within some of the lessons and, uh, the burden that that placed on the teachers to be able to revise, uh, as they were using it. And again, uh, the timing of it being very close to essentially when they were implementing the curriculum. So, uh, the leadership team put together, uh, a strong set of, uh, materials and recommendations for the purchase of, uh, an outside curriculum called Arriba la Lectura for usage in grades, I believe, one and two this year, uh, and recommended the continued usage of the created curriculum for kindergarten to allow for teachers, uh, for essentially the refinement of that curriculum over the course of the next year. And again, with a goal to be, to continue to create, uh, LEAP's own SLA curriculum that will eventually become part of the LEAP way, but to do so at a pace, um, and a scope that would be, um, would afford teachers, uh, a bit more time to be able to, to, to do the vetting and the implementation, um, that they feel is, uh, appropriate for their grade levels. The, so the, um, I believe we're still waiting for a final price point on that, but the online version of the curriculum is free. And we'll begin, and perhaps has already begun to be implemented. I'm not totally sure.
The rollout for that will be within the next two weeks.
Okay. All right. Thank you, Dorsa. Roberto will, uh, eventually, uh, approve the purchase once the final price point comes in. Uh, based on the, uh, the dialogue and the, uh, recommendations that we had during that meeting, Melissa and I, as the education accountability committee, approved of that purchase. We think it will enable teachers to continue, uh, putting most of their focus on implementing instruction in SLA. Uh, as you know, we, uh, have a lot of high-need students. Uh, we want to be able to focus on getting them to where they need to be. Again, bringing back my earlier point about getting toward renewal, uh, which I think is the mindset that we need to be operating on. Uh, we have a ways to go in terms of the academic results that we need to deliver and Spanish language, uh, academic and, uh, general fluency for our kids. And we want to be able to create a curriculum that, um, we feel is rigorous and scaffolded and has enough, uh, supports as well for teachers that, uh, we can confidently say that it's one that serves our kids well and can continue to do so in the future. I know that was a fairly high level, but Michael, Melissa, um, Dorsa, if there's anything that I've missed or Roberto as well, if I, if I've mischaracterized anything, please feel free to do nothing.
That was clear, thorough and accurate. Thanks.
Yes.
Thank you. Okay.
So I know that, um, as the, at the neck, I don't know if Delly Ness has spoken to you before she left, but I know that the work that the team has been doing to look at our fall academic data is something that they're, they and we are eager to share, uh, with the committee at, at its next meeting.
Great. Thank you. Okay. I think then we would move into, there's, if, are there any questions? I apologize. Any questions from the rest of the board on this? Looks like no. Okay. Then we'll move into, I believe, uh, board roles and development. I don't think we have any updates on this this month. And I don't believe that we have any members of the public present.
Uh, we, we have one, in fact.
Oh, I never see them. You, you all, but I can't.
Yeah. So I wanna, I wanna greet our diligent parent, Ms. Woods, is with us again this evening. I'm gonna press the allowed to talk button. Alma, are you there? And would you care to share anything?
I'm here. Not much to share, um, just to say thank you to the school, uh, for, I've never seen such a seamless transition from re, uh, in-person to remote. Uh, my son came home with everything that he needed. Parents on class tag had a lot of questions and I was able to feel some of those and say like, guys, this is the plan. We all have packets and we'll, we'll start remote on the 19th. But it was really nice, nicely done. So kudos to the entire LEAP team. Uh, and I'm just hoping that we can get back in person sooner than later. Thank you.
Thank you, Alma. So are we?
Yep. We definitely all want, we all want that. None of the kids want that.
If I, if I may, Gabrielle, I, um, I, I don't, uh, say this often enough, but I mean, every school director of operations in the city has been put through their paces this year. And, uh, no one more than, than Ms. Torres, who's here, uh, as well as her team. It's you scramble and you run in that direction and then you run back the other way. Uh, and I know that also our instructional leaders and our teachers, I mean, just to give everyone a small empathy moment, our teachers today are planning for next week's lessons and they're planning for a schedule for in-person and then the same lessons on an online schedule, uh, because they don't know, because we're not able to tell them. And so, uh, there's just been a lot of, a lot of grit, a lot of ganas shown, uh, by folks on both sides of, of the House at, at the Pecado Me.
Loved hearing you say ganas, Michael.
Yeah.
Put that in the minutes.
You've learned well.
That should have been one of our charles. Thank you, Michael. Uh, thank you all for the incredible work that you're putting in to do this. The whiplash must be unbelievable from your end. And thank you for being so transparent with our families, uh, with us as a board, looping us in always about the decisions that get made. Uh, you know, asking for our, our, our partnership on some of the communications. It really, if it's something that we have to do, I'm, I'm glad that we're doing it together. I'm glad that we're doing it, uh, as thoroughly and, and deliberately as we possibly can. So, um, thank you to everyone and let's all bear, let's all bear with us. Hear it out. Okay. Uh, I think that is it. Does anybody else have any, uh, questions, comments, anything before we adjourn? Looks like no. Okay. I'm going to just really quickly look for our next meeting date to make sure that we have it before we leave, I believe. Yes, November 17th. So just a little plug for everyone to mark your calendars for next month. November 17th will be our next meeting. And we will see you all then. But, uh, if there are no other questions or comments, I move to adjourn this meeting. Second?
Second.
Second.
Great. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you again, everyone, for your time and we will see you in November.
Aye.
The meeting is adjourned at 7:11 PM.
Good evening. Good night.
Bye.
Good night.